Edan.
There we go.
Record the meeting. Good afternoon. Okay, I'm just looking to see if we have, okay, we're good. All right, this is the meeting of the Wellfleet Zoning Board for Thursday, July 8th at 7:00. And our first case is 2117 Batshalter, application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, et cetera. This is a continuation from our last meeting. Ben, you're on.
Sharon?
Yes.
Sharon.
Oh, the board, yes. The board, yes. The board continues to be Mick, Will, Trevor, Manny, and myself.
Thank you.
Ben, you're muted.
Can you all hear me okay now?
Yep.
Hello, everybody. Nice to see you all again. Very, very simply, I'm requesting that the board move and vote to allow us to withdraw this matter without prejudice.
Yeah, okay. I need a motion to move and...
I'll make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Where was my second? Manny, Manny was my second. All in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, bud.
Okay. All right, 2119 Outer Cape Health Services Incorporated, 2700 State Highway Route 6, map 15 parcel 152, application for a special permit pursuant to sections 5.2 and 8.4.2 with the Wellfleet zoning bylaw for the addition of a drive-through window in connection with the existing pharmacy use. And I think, Will, you wanted to recuse yourself?
Yes, I can't sit on this.
Okay.
I'm on the board of Outer Cape, so it wouldn't be very appropriate.
Right, so I think you can actually...
Yeah, I will disappear here.
I think you can actually leave. Okay. Goodbye, Will, we miss you. Okay, the board will be Trevor, Mick, Manny, Jan, and Andy. Okay, Outer Cape, you are, you are on.
Whoever's speaking. Members of the board, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thanks. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jeannie Campus. I'm an attorney at Nutter, McLennan &amp; Fish. I'm here on behalf of Outer Cape Health Services, which I'm sure you all know as a nonprofit organization dedicated to providing a full range of healthcare services and supportive social services to promote the health and well-being of both residents of the Outer Cape as well as visitors. We are here tonight on a special permit application in connection with their existing pharmacy located at 2700 Route 6. I'd briefly like to introduce you to the project team who is here with me this evening. We have Brad Malo, a senior project manager at Coastal Engineering, Randy Hart, a traffic engineer from VHB, and also here with us is Alan Hall, the facilities director of Outer Cape Health Services, and Patricia Nadel is also here. So as I mentioned before, we're pleased to present our application for a special permit. It's for a proposed drive-through window that will be in connection with the existing pharmacy at the property at 2700 Route 6. We're here because a drive-through use is not expressly identified as an allowed use in your youth regulations, and so we're here to seek special permit relief under section 5.2, which allows a use not listed by special permit if it resembles in terms of impacts a use authorized by right or by special permit. I'm going to be speaking very briefly about the existing conditions at the site and the need for the drive-through window, and then I'm going to turn it over to Brad Malo, who will discuss the proposed site changes. And after that, Randy Hart will walk you through his transportation assessment, which hopefully you have all received at this point. And then finally, I'll touch briefly upon how this proposal satisfies the requirements set forth in the bylaw and is therefore deserving of the relief requested. So with that, I'm going to briefly talk about existing conditions. This property at 2700 Route 6 contains approximately 1.24 acres of upland. It is within the commercial zoning district, and it has been improved with a single commercial structure since approximately 1960. That structure currently houses the Outer Cape Health Services Pharmacy as well as an animal clinic. The main entrance to the site is off of Route 6. It contains a traffic signal. There is also a secondary means of access off of Old Kings Highway. There's an existing paved parking area in the front of the lot, and there's a gravel parking area to the side. The project we're proposing is quite simple in many respects. It's to add a drive-through window to the south side of the building towards the southeast corner. The purpose, as I'm sure you all can imagine, is to improve access to medicines, which access without human interaction was highlighted by the COVID-19 pandemic. But setting that aside, you know, it's particularly important for those who may be disabled or sick or those with small children. As Brad and Randy will both get into in more detail, there are no changes proposed to the existing footprint of the building, and there are also no changes proposed to the existing footprint of the parking area, no changes to existing landscaping either. There is, however, a proposed reconfiguration of the onsite circulation, which is intended to ensure that any queuing that may result from the drive-through window is contained entirely onsite and will not be impacting the traffic on Route 6. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brad, who can discuss in more detail some of the site changes that we've proposed.
Thank you, board. Brad Malo from Coastal Engineering. The proposed improvements to the site, which I'll confine my remarks to specifically, as Jeannie described, would be a drive-up delineation along the southerly side of the building. And at present, there's an existing gravel, or I would call it what's known as a T-base surfaced drivable material all around the rear of the building, the rear being the easterly side of the building opposite from Route 6. That existing T-base surface would be paved to a width as indicated on the plan, so that we can have a drive-up window along the southerly side of the building. There would be two lanes. One would be the 12-foot wide drive-through lane, and then there would be another 12-foot wide lane that adjoins an existing gravel parking area that's to the south of the building. A 12-to-14-foot wide paved driveway would then be enhanced around the rear of the building and along to the north side of the building, rejoining the existing paved parking area that lies along the front of the structure between Route 6 and the building. The existing parking striping along the front of the building aligns parking so that it's, so that you would enter those parking spaces from a south-to-north angle facing Route 6. The proposed reconfiguration of the traffic patterns would require us to, as we propose, to restripe those parking spaces. There would be the same number and general location of those parking spaces, but they would be realigned so you would enter those from the north to the south in keeping with a counterclockwise direction around the building. We're proposing some pavement markings, including striping and directional arrows that are delineated on the drawing to help patrons navigate around the site in an organized fashion. You'd enter and exit from the southerly entrance to Route 6 on the property, and then an exit only would be to the north end of the property. To further enhance the traffic control, we're proposing, we considered an island, but in the end, we decided to go with a painted island of sorts, and there would be traffic delineator posts to accentuate the ground markings on that. And these are simply the yellow stanchions that you see along Route 6, along between Exit 12 and Exit 8, or formerly what was known as Exit 12 and Exit 9 on the midcape. Those are the physical improvements to the site, very limited. There's about a two-foot of grade difference in the existing traveled surface, and then so we would be proposing no grade changes, and we would also not be proposing any change to the drainage patterns or existing drainage systems on the site. If you have any further questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I'll turn it back to Jeannie.
I'm going to have Randy now walk you through the transportation assessment, if you don't mind, Randy.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, would it be okay if I share my screen? I have a little PowerPoint.
Um, I'm not sure that the...
Okay.
The trouble is that the towns thing doesn't allow us to allow you to share a screen. You can email it to me, and I can share it, but I don't think you can share it, so probably just as easy not to bother with it.
Okay, point taken. So my name's Randy Hart. I'm a principal at VHB. VHB prepared a brief traffic assessment. They really focus on a number of things, but most specifically on access circulation. But we also took a real good look at the existing customer activity and what we might anticipate to be at the drive-through window if it were to be approved. Let's see. So I had a plan to show you, but I think Brad did a pretty good job of summarizing the changes. The one thing I want to emphasize about the change is that as you come in from the signal, the delineation between the enter driveway and the drive-through is probably one of the most important features of the change for the plan in what will really ensure that there's no potential for queue out to Route 6 from the drive-through window. The counterclockwise circulation ensures that any queue, if any were to be realized, would be contained onsite, as Jeannie has already mentioned. So it's a really important element of the proposed plan. So in terms of customer activity, we're told that the drive-through is proposed to give existing customer base another option to drop and pick prescriptions. It's not expected that the addition of the drive-through is going to all of a sudden increase the business in any way, shape, or form, but it's really there to offer an alternative, especially in light of what we all witnessed and lived through during the COVID period. We asked for and were given transactional data for over a week. We were given a Monday through Saturday, May 30th through June 5th, and it's an hour-by-hour breakdown of the number of transactions that occurred onsite, and that really gives us an idea of what the expectation is for activity. And what we found is, looking at the weekday, five days of data, looking at the hourly data and averaging out the hours, the peak hour occurs from 12 to 1 on a weekday, and during that period, the average transactions was about 21 transactions total. The peak on the Saturday also fell into the 12-to-1 category, and there was a total of 29 transactions during that period. Outer Cape has told us that they have existing curbside activity, and that represents about 10% to 15% of their pharmacy services are done that way. We certainly anticipate that that 10% to 15% would transfer over to the window should it be approved. Outer Cape also has told us that 70% of the customer transactions onsite have a pharmacy component to it, so not 100%, but 70% currently do, and I think that's an important thing I'll come back to in a few minutes. So customers that require general merchandise purchase will have to go into the store as they do today. There will be no general merchandise sales conducted through the drive-through window. The actual drive-through activity, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but what we expect it would mirror to some degree, the curbside activity maybe grow a little bit from there. But what we wanted to do for the town and for the proponent was really do what we call a sensitivity analysis. We wanted to really, you know, assume that there was a major shift to the drive-through window, and we wanted to see what that might do to operations onsite. So what we did was, we assumed that 50% of all transactions, not just pharmacy transactions, but, you know, we assume that 50% of transactions might go to the window, and what if it did? What would that mean for the peak hour operations onsite? As I said before, we think it's much lower than that. It's probably 15% to 20% of the 70% that currently have pharmacy transactions, but let's just go and do a sensitivity analysis of 50%. At 50%, we showed that 11 vehicles would utilize the drive-through window during that critical weekday peak hour, 12 to 1, and 15 vehicles on the critical peak hour on Saturday. And what that translates to is, the 11 vehicles is really one vehicle every five and a half minutes or so during the critical peak hour. The Saturday, 15 vehicles translates to about a vehicle every four minutes. So those are the critical peak hours for a weekday and a Saturday. During all the other hours of the day, it's much less than that. So those are the periods we focus on, the critical peak hour periods. We've been told, and we've seen this in other locations, that the transactions at the window typically go about three to four minutes for pickup. If it's a drop-off, it's much, much quicker than that. So some drops will be very quick, but if you're there to pick up, it could be a two-to-three-or-four-minute transaction period. And so if you look at that transaction period of three-and-a-half minutes over a 60-minute period, that says that we can have about approximately 18 transactions per hour at the window without really ever seeing a queue in that particular area. There would be times when, depending on arrival patterns of the customers, there could be, you know, two vehicles that arrive fairly close to each other, so you might see a queue of one or two vehicles. But based on the data we're seeing, we're just not expecting to see much of a queue at all, even during the peak hours. And so I just want to end with a couple notes. One is that we really did put forward a very conservative assessment, and there's a couple of reasons for it. You know, as I said, we assume that 50% of all transactions would occur at the window from the curbside activity that currently exists. We know it's much, much, much less than that. And we also, you know, we know it's much less, and we stated that 70% of the transactions have pharmacy component, not the 100% we, you know, considered in our sensitivity. So that's two layers of conservatism right there. Another thing we assume is that all the transactions occurred from a single occupancy vehicle. We know that that's not always the case. There's going to be, you know, two people in a car, maybe three. They might go in each doing their own transaction. That's probably very common on the Cape. I would definitely expect to see more of that. We also assume that no one either biked or walked or used transit to get to the site. You know, there would be some activity there, maybe not a lot, but there certainly would be some. And so no credit was taken for that. So when you look at all those different layers of conservatism, we're very comfortable that the queue that would exist even during the peak hours would probably be one to two vehicles max. If it ever did get a little bit larger, we have storage for up to four to five vehicles before it has an influence on parking. But the thing that I want to leave you with the message here is really that if there is a queue and it is, you know, four or five vehicles or even longer, it's contained onsite. It has no possibility of getting back out to Route 6, and I think that's something that's very important, and that's exactly why the site was designed the way it was. So with that, if there are questions as the night continues, I'd be happy to try and respond to them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Will, Will no doubt come back to you. So Ms. Campus, what else do you have?
I'm almost done. Thank you for bearing...
No worries, no worries. Take your time.
...go through some of the special permit criteria and identify how this project satisfies that criteria. One of the, one of the questions you must consider is whether the property is suitable for the project. And here, you have an existing pharmacy. There are no changes proposed to the footprint of the building or to the footprint of the parking area. We are merely adding a drive-through window, and as Randy explained very thoroughly, the main, I think the main concern with everybody is queuing and potential impact to Route 6, and we have done everything in our power to absolutely ensure that that will not happen under any circumstances. So the site has been reconfigured to accommodate any and all queuing, and safe access and egress is provided through both the existing traffic signal as well as the proposed signage delineator posts and pavement markings that we propose. Also, there's no impact on any existing views. There's no impact to any existing landscaping. Everything is to remain as it is today. And finally, I just want to point out that this is a low-intensity year-round use, and it does contribute to the diversity of services offered in Wellfleet by offering this alternative to patrons of the Outer Cape Health Services Pharmacy. So with those criteria met, we would respectfully request that you grant the special permit, and I think as everyone has said, we're happy to answer any questions we may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Chris, I know I have a letter from the police chief and the fire chief, which I will read. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this? Seeing no one, let me read the fire chief first, because that's on screen. "My only concern is entering the property from Route 6 and the possibility of long lines of cars backing up on the property and reversely exiting the property from the parking lot back onto Route 6. I don't really envision the use, a drive-through window, as being heavily used or that problematic in terms of density. However, as most are aware, the intersection is problematic. I am not opposed to the application, though. Please don't hesitate to contact me with any questions." Thank you, and that is Rich Pauli, the fire chief. And from the police, similar kind of thing. "Hello, gentlemen, I have reviewed the proposal, and the only concern would be if vehicles waiting for the drive-up began backing up into the front lot, which would then prevent a flow issue off Route 6. Just wondering if they have a plan proposed to deal with potential long lines and flow off Route 6." I think you have spoken to that. Do you want to speak to that again in any way? I guess they're worried about...
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Randy Hart again.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just real quick. So the one thing about the entering vehicles and the concern of it, you know, being inefficient, it's actually the way it's designed with the barrier and stanchions between the drive-through and the entry lane. It's a free-flow condition, and there's no reason to really cause a stop or a slowdown. You know, if you wanted to park on the, on the south side, you simply make a right-hand turn into the parking space. And if you wanted to circulate to the, you know, other side of the project to get into the drive-through lane, you know, you have to go all the way around the building. So it's, there's really nothing to impede the movement onto the site that might cause a backup to Route 6. I don't see that happening.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will go to the board. Manny, would you like to begin?
No, but I will.
Okay.
I think the drive-up window is a great thing. My only concern is when the traffic goes around, it has to go by those parked cars, and there's a 12-foot difference between the building and the parking areas. That's my only concern.
Okay, Trevor.
Um, yeah, I was trying to figure out, looking at the site plan earlier, can you guys see me? Because I got the air conditioner going here. Trying to figure out how the traffic was working, but I think I understand it now. So everybody who enters the site, if I'm bringing my cat to the vet, I still drive around the backside of the building first, I think, right? And then park in the lot. And if you're going to the drive-in, the drive-through window, you actually drive around the backside of the building twice. Then you would drive around once and then drive around again after you, yeah, okay.
That's correct.
And, and you're forcing people to exit at the light and not exit at the dirt road at the other end of the parking lot, which I know people tend to do sometimes, which is probably...
Not good.
A good thing. Yeah, I mean, I, I second Manny's concern about cars backing out of the parking space with, with the traffic going by behind them, but that's an issue now, I suppose. It's not, doesn't really change that. And I don't really have any other concerns at the moment.
Thank you. Al?
Um, well, the narrowness of the space on the east side of the building is of a little bit of concern. There are a couple of structures, you know, like shed-like things that are sticking out into that area, and I just wonder, since you're going to apparently have two lanes going behind, you know, the building, is it really going to be 14 feet consistently throughout that space? And I suppose Mr. Malo could probably answer that. If those structures aren't removed, I kind of, I think it's going to be really, really tight, you know, for like two cars to negotiate that together. Or if there's only one lane, fine. And then the issue of egress, so I didn't understand, but I do now, that the only egress is going to be onto Route 6 at the light. So the other entrance that's on that dirt road that people were using is going to be blocked, or is it still going to be usable? Those are my questions.
Okay, maybe we'll collect the questions, Ms. Campus, and then I'll let you get them answered in various ways. Mick?
Yep. I guess if I'm bringing my cat to the vet, and I want to go out and head towards Providence Town, I just go around the drive-through twice and then go out that way, or unless I'm heading back up towards East Town, I'll go to the lights. Have you guys spoken to your neighbor about this, about the drive-through? Has anybody reached out to the vet to see what their, there is, I don't have a problem with it. I think it'll get, people will get used to using it, and it's just a matter of getting your head around it. I see it where the vet is. It's 15 feet wide, and then it narrows down to 12 feet at the ends as you regress back out onto 6. So my question is, has anybody touched bases with your neighbor?
Okay, right. And Jan? Unmute yourself, Jan.
Sorry about that. I have the same concern as everyone else does about the narrow, narrowness of the front of the building. There's not, nothing we can really do with that. I have a couple of questions, though. The traffic analysis says that three to four minutes estimated for pickup of medications and drop-offs far quicker, but correct me if I'm wrong, won't there be very few drop-offs? I haven't had a paper script in years. I mean, aren't they always now faxed in or emailed or something like that? Okay, so I'm going to assume that pretty much everything is going to be three to four minutes unless somebody corrects me. The other thing I want to try and understand, I didn't have, I'm assuming that Outer Cape had to have a special permit when they took over this space. I don't have that in my packet, and I'm trying to understand how much parking was required. There's an old special permit from '99 that mentioned something about 35 parking spaces, and I know at times there have been many more companies here, businesses here. Were there supposed to be any parking spaces in the back, and if so, aren't you eliminating them? I, I want to understand that. Um, what else? Okay. Other thing I'm curious about, so I was, when I was there the other day, and we've all done this, I was parked on the side, and a vehicle came in and took a short left and went, I guess that's the north. So as I read this plan, you're going to have posts, delineation posts, just on that basic, that sort of island, correct? And then it's just going to be a painted yellow line around the building? Is there room for people to continue doing that, to just make a sharp left even though they're not supposed to? I'm just concerned about congestion or people colliding in there. And I think that's it. Those are my questions. Other than that, I just want to say that we have used the curbside pickup many, many, many times during the pandemic, and I feel for all the employees who have to come out over and over and over again to give medications to people. So I certainly think this is a great thing. Oh, I have one other question to the traffic, the traffic specialist. The data was from a weekend that included Memorial Day weekend, which is great, but I wonder how that compares to July and August. Now I'm done.
Thank you, man. Okay, Rita? Rita? Now you're muted. Now you're muted. Now you're muted, Rita. Okay, there, good.
No longer muted. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. I have no questions about this. It seems like a very good idea. There'll be benefits to the customers and to the employees of this pharmacy.
Okay. And Andy.
Yes, I have, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sometimes there's an issue with my microphone. I share the same concerns that everybody has expressed. And I'm also not sure I understand. Is there to be no exit to the north whatsoever now? Is that what you're being told? Even though the diagram says exit only?
I think I misspoke on that. I'm the one who said that. But I think I was wrong on that. You can still exit. You just can't enter from that end now, I guess.
Okay, okay. All right. We got it there. And that space in the front of the building is very narrow. And I, you know, is there no other place to put this window? If it were possible to put it somewhere else, particularly in the back, which I see is if not impossible. We wouldn't have this whole issue of going around, you know, in a circle to to get to the window. It's but I guess my question to any of you, the experts or what have you, or attorney, is let's suppose there's no queue. You come in at the light. Can you just, couldn't you just go then directly to the window and then exit north? And we wouldn't have all of this trouble? Or are you going going to require a customer to do that? I can't imagine you would. It sort of looks like you're forcing everybody to go around at least once. Maybe twice. So that's, and like Jan, I noticed the traffic study was done over Memorial, but then we have the first week of June. And yeah, I think that's it. Generally, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I do have the concern, I really have a concern about the possible queues, if there are any, and people trying to back out to get, to get out. That could be messy. Again, I use the Outer Cape Pharmacy, I should say, and quite rarely is there, are there ever that many spaces filled. But of course, most of the time I'm using it off-season, so maybe I don't know what it's like during the summer season. That's all.
Okay, and you're keeping good, good notes on this, Jamie, and I'll go last. And, and basically, I'm sort of with the fire chief on that. I think this is going to be a low volume, so I think some of these problems you're not going to encounter. Because I don't think there's going to be mobs of, I mean, this isn't Dunkin' Donuts and everybody getting coffee in the morning. However, my site visit was an adventure. Because I did my drive around, and then I decided to go out the entrance out toward the northbound side on that far end. At which point someone from living up the road on Old Kings Highway was coming down, and his plan, I was behind him, his plan was to go left from there. Which is truly a bonehead play. But he also decided to do it by going out into Route 6 to sort of force the issue. And people came in about ready to hit him, so he decided to back up, at which point he was heading straight for me. So it was an adventure of a site visit. I'm wondering, that, that long story is to tell you that I think there needs to be some sort of sign there that says no left turn out of that far north entrance, because going left there, you know, I mean, your traffic study shows it, that the intersection's problematic, and that's not your fault. And making a left, if you're coming from Truro into the Outer Cape Pharmacy, is a nightmare because there's no left-turn lane there, and that's not your fault. And it's not Outer Cape's responsibility to fix either one of those things. But that one of maybe a sign that says, don't go left, might work. My other question, I'm concerned about the narrowness in the front and people backing up, but I think that's pretty much a condition of parking lots. So I'm not sure that that's any different than people backing up out of Stop and Shop into the lanes that go behind. But I'm more concerned about people's habit now of going in from the light and making a left to go to the, to the animal clinic or to park in front of the thing, and how you will make sure. Because I don't think double lines is going to do it. How you'll make sure people don't make a left right into your oncoming traffic coming around the other way. So those were, were all of my questions. I don't, I don't have others. So, so, okay. Miss Campus, I'll turn it over to you, and you can call on your various experts to tell us.
Yeah, so it sounds like a concern shared by most or all of you is the narrowness in the front. So Brad or Randy, do you want to, do you want to address that, please?
Glad to take a stab at that, in that it's, the orientation of the front parking lot is simply the mirror image of what exists today. So acknowledge that it is not, if, if we were building this today from a clean slate, we probably would not have the geometry that we inherited. But I do not believe that the realignment of the striping exacerbates the situation. What we're talking about and what we've dimensioned on the plan is 12 feet wide. And the length of those lines are in the vicinity of 20 feet long, but there's no reason that cars do and won't overhang the street side of those parking stalls, and that typical vehicle is much shorter than 20 feet. So there'll be a from a practical standpoint, there'll be a wider distance than 12 feet from any kind of a physical barrier to the rear of the car in, in practice out there. I don't have much more to offer on that. I mean, bottom line is, it's, it's, it's not going to be any different or worse than it is today.
Brad, unless anyone has any follow-up, I'll keep going through the concerns. Does that sound good? So let's talk about the exit to the north. There were some questions about that. Randy, maybe you could address that.
Yes, so the plan is, is to maintain one-way egress from the northern driveway. And I, you know, I drove it not too long ago as well, and I can agree with your concerns. You know, there are chevrons in the middle of the road, and technically you are not supposed to make a left turn on a Chevron. So if, but it gets caught, it's a ticket, and it's an expensive ticket at that. But having said that, I totally agree with you that a no-left turn or right-turn-only sign, or maybe both, would be very appropriate at that location.
What else? Randy, can you, or maybe Alan, this is for you, addressing possible increase in traffic in July and August months?
Well, obviously, you know, the summer is what it is. We have more folks here in the, in the population growth. I was there to, last week before the Fourth of July is a busy, very busy intersection, busy, busy entrance and egress out of our property. Everybody was flowing. But I really think with the delineation, as you come in the entrance now, with those stanchion posts that we're going to put there in place, that will eliminate, that will keep the cars continuing around the backside of the facility. And if they want to park in front, or if they want to use the drive-up, it gives them that option, but it will clearly delineate, and it won't allow folks to make that left turn in front of the facility with those yellow stanchions. So that's, I feel very confident about that. With good signage on the property, and once people get used to it, I think it will flow very smoothly. There was a question, one of the members had a concern about the rear of the facility and the outbuildings that are there. It's our goal to have one of those outbuildings removed, because currently, right now, they're fuel oil sheds for our furnaces. And we're going to get rid of those in the renovations. We're going to put all electric components in there. So that will give us some more space there, and we'll also place bollards along the building in any intersection where any obstructions could be placed. There was, if I can, there was another question about why can't the drive-up window be on the east side of the building? Well, that would incur a lot more cost for us that we don't have. You would have to actually physically put a foundation in and add on to the facility and bring it out into that roadway, which just would not be feasible for our organization. So that's why we decided to put it on the southern, southern Gable Land at the furthest eastally portion of the Gable Land. And then there was one other question about our neighbor. Actually, he's, he's our tenant, and he's been a good, great tenant. And he actually sent me an email this afternoon, if I can read it into record, and I can send it to Jeanie, and she can send it to Sharon later. It says, "To whom it may concern. I have a heavy business for over 25 years in that building, that Outer Cape Health is wanting to start a drive-through auction for their pharmacy. I have no problem with the concept, and in fact, it might help the congestion with the parking area. Outer Cape Health Pharmacy is the only local pharmacy and is hindered with the amount of customers they can provide for because of the lack of parking. I think the drive-through would help to eliminate congestions. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dr. John S. Kelly." So he's, he's on board with us. We have a great working relationship. We're trying to minimize and, you know, work through all the challenges that we have there on that site, and I really feel confident will be a great addition to the town of Waltham.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jean, I know Jan has her hand up, but you may have, have you been down through your list yet?
What was a follow-up to Mr. Hall?
Okay, yes, okay.
I believe Mr. Hall said that with the renovate, with the, the island put in there and the bollards, cars are not going to be able to make a left turn. To me, it looks like you can, because I guess my question is, why not continue the bollards all the way around through that yellow line, so that there's just absolutely no way people can jump the line or make that left? Because I think it's physically possible to come in and make a sharp left around that island.
That's a good question.
So Mr. Hart, do you have any answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, absolutely. In fact, I thought that was the proposal, that it would be blocked whether by curb or by stanchions all the way. Because what we cannot do here is we cannot have it be both ways, you know, during an on-peak period when, you know, there might not be anybody at the window. You can't just come in and go to the window. We got to control it full-time, and it's got to be effective so that no left turns can happen, and nobody can go directly to the window, because anything short of that is just going to, you know, potentially complicate things and confuse the matter as well.
Okay. That's that.
Madam Chair, could I offer
Yes, please.
A comment to that
Sure.
in that regard. I do agree with Randy in that regard. One of the iterations did show stanchions along that double yellow line all the way to the point of the drive-up window. One of our concerns had, had been whether or not that would be an adverse impact on maneuverability for emergency vehicles in there. So we made the choice to eliminate some of the stanchions. We'd certainly be amenable and think it's appropriate, as long as the fire chief has no objections to the stanchions to or any concerns with maneuverability of any of the apparatus around that area. I think it would be appropriate to have stanchions all the way along that dual-lane arrangement.
We had no comment from either police or fire about any problem with the stanchions, so it sounds like you don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I would point out that the stanchions that we have are more or less in a triangular formation. So the, the particular drawing that he saw did not call for stanchions all the way
Right.
to the window. So if he had no objections to the continuation of those, then we could certainly implement those into the design.
I think I'm hearing that the board would prefer those. Does anyone have a comment on that?
I do.
Manny.
This, this plan does not show any stanchions. All, all it shows is a double yellow line. I would, I would rather see on the plan the stanchions or the bollards. Or somehow if we do approve it, maybe there could be a mention that they will be installed.
A condition on the, on the approval?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
Sharon, I was just going to add that I can guarantee you, people are going to jump that line if we don't put bollards there or
That's why.
Absolutely. And in the off-season, it'll happen all the time anyway, but I'm not anyway, not despite bollards, but people will do it in the off-season if there aren't any. But during on-season, that could be messy if you have people driving around, waiting in line, and then you get somebody drive right up and jump the line.
Right. Yep. Okay. All right. What else?
Sharon, I just have a question.
Yes, Andy.
One thing that I'm not clear about. Right now, when you come into the, to Outer Cape Pharmacy, you're supposed to park, obviously, in front. There are some spaces to the right, to the south, which they may say employees only. And where I've seen, and in fact, I had myself park over there. And is that going to be, what if anything is going to be done to prevent? I mean, that from happening such that somebody parks there, then walks through the, you know, a lot of traffic to get to the front door? That's a question for anybody.
Yeah.
If they're representing the applicant.
Actually, how many spaces are there right now? Parking spaces? I'm counting 11 in the front.
Right.
And
That's all that shows.
Yeah, but I know there is some parking on the side, so I'm just wondering what.
Brad, do you have, do you have that figure?
No, the, since they're not delineated, it's a
Right.
kind of a free-for-all.
Yes.
The 11 delineated spaces, I would agree with, correct? I, I would point one thing out while you're on that topic, that, you know, where present day, you can drive in off of Route 6, you make the left to go in front of the building, and you pull into the angled parking space. As we were talking about some of the discomfort that we have exiting out of that north-only exit of the, of the site. If you're parking in the front of the building today, you're only going to go exiting the north of the site, because there's a do-not-enter to go clockwise around the building. So this circulation pack, pattern actually encourages those to use the controlled intersection to the south. And so it's actually a safer egress point. What presently exists.
I've got a question, Sharon.
Yes, yes, Nick.
Where are the employees going to park on this? Because they're normally over to the right as you pull in?
Mr. Hall.
Yes, I, they will remain where they park currently.
Which is on the right.
On the south side towards the cemetery.
So you have enough room for that, yeah?
It's working now, yes, yeah.
How many employees are in the building at any one time?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, I see it's on there.
Yep. So that would be. So that would be. Yeah.
I have one more question. Sorry. To, to Mr. I don't, is Alan. Are you intending to make any improvements to the inside of the store? Contemporary news with this?
Yes, that's what we're doing with the, the addition of the drive up window. We have the vacant unit to the south. So we're gonna open, open that up from the retail side. We're gonna blow through the wall there. And move the, take the pharmacy where it is now and move it over to the south side of that facility.
So do you envision then increasing the amount of retail products that you sell?
No.
Or space?
What this, what this allows for is more social distancing amongst the staff of seven. This gives that more workspace, more workstations spread out. Right now, if you all have gone in there, it's quite tight and congested and they've. Done a yeoman's job this past year and it's outstanding to see how they work so well in those. Space, in that current space. So with this addition, it's gonna free up so much more for them, give them adequate storage. And a real break room for themselves. It's really a positive, positive improvement.
So you're not trying to grow the business in there?
No, no.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to help the social distancing, the access, the feasibility of utilizing that site to the most efficient way possible. For safety and for our patients and customers.
Okay, thank you.
And you're not planning to, at one point there was another retail store there and you're not planning to rent the building. Rent that other space now.
No, it's all gonna be utilized by Outer Cape Health Services.
Right, right. And Jan, to your question from earlier, I do not believe that when we went from a retail space to a retail space, it required a permit.
Okay, so.
They went in there as a retail, replacing another retail.
Yeah.
So I think that's why there's no paperwork to that. I would be, I could be wrong on that, but that's my sense of it.
I'm just trying to understand how many parking spaces they are supposed to have and were any of those spaces in the rear because. At other times in history with other businesses, there were supposed to be spaces in the rear.
I was looking up the parking spaces as we were talking and so it's. For retail spaces, two. Or one per 150 square feet plus one space for every three employees. So, and you have to add the duck creek on there, so. I'm not sure how those 11 work out, but. That's what we have at the moment, I think, is 11. But of course, there are others because the employees are parking to the other side, so. I don't know. It's a mystery.
I think even though they're not delineated on the plan, the gravel parking, it is noted as a gravel parking area and it is used for parking spaces. They're just not striped. Spaces.
Right.
So I, I think it's fair to say we have more than 11. And you know. I, I, I did not find, I found special permits from. The 90s, I believe, relating to prior uses. I did not find any plans. And I reached out to, to Chris Bates and she's wonderful, but. We couldn't find any plans showing the required or anything regarding the required parking for this use. I think it's safe to say that it's not, the parking is not fully utilized at any time. And if anything, I think the drive through window. Is intended to decrease any parking demand on the site because a certain percentage of the customers will be using the drive through and then will be leaving and will not be parking on site.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions from the board? No other questions? All right. Yes.
I'm sorry, one thing I wanted to add.
Of course.
Alan did send me the email from the animal clinic. I sent it to Chris Bates late this afternoon and I apologize for that. So. It's my fault that you don't have it in front of you, but I will be happy to email it to whomever needs to receive it.
Yeah, I think the fact that it has been read into the record is the main point. That the, yeah, it would be good to have it in the packet, so just email it to Chris as well. All right. Are you? All right, board, are you? Do you want to discuss this anymore or is anyone ready, ready to go to findings?
I'll move for findings if the board is available.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Me or the Trevor?
Yes, yes.
Jan?
Aye.
Andy?
Yeah, aye.
And Mick?
Aye.
Now, if you'll just be patient with me for a minute, the findings have been eaten by my desk. So. So while I get them uneaten. Somebody can entertain themselves with the notion of. If how you're gonna write this condition, because I think we're gonna wanna condition it on the bowling thing, so.
Sharon, we need a vote on.
Oh, yes.
Findings, please.
On the, no, we just moved to go to findings and I just said, everybody said aye.
Yep.
Oh, oh, okay.
I did that vote.
Okay.
I'm ahead of you on that one. I just have to find the findings. Which. Got eaten, so.
Could I ask who seconded the motion?
Manny dude.
Pardon me?
Manny.
Oh, okay, thank you. Didn't sound.
Manny opened, Manny seconded, yes. All right, here we go. All right.
So how do we want the amendment to read?
Well, you can think about that. I've found the findings, sort of. So here we go. 2119 Outer Cape Health Services Incorporated. Outer Cape Health Services Incorporated, 27 state, 7700 State Highway Route 6, MAP 15. Parcel 142, application for a special permit pursuant to sections 5.1 and 8.4.3.2. Of the Wellfleet zoning bylaws for the addition of a drive through window in connection with the existing pharmacy use. The lot is in the commercial district. The property, which contains approximately 1.24 acres of upland, is currently improved. With a single commercial structure built in approximately 1960 per the assessors records. The applicant seeks to add a drive through window to its existing year round pharmacy on the property to. Improve access to medicines, particularly for disabled patrons or guardians of children and to minimize human interaction. The use conforms with the objectives of the commercial district as stated in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2. There was no objection to the project from the police, fire or DPW. There was one apparent, one letter in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the project. Parenthetical note, Route 6 at that intersection is not adequate for anything, but that's not your fault. The use contributes to the diversity of services available. The board, board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2. The property is suitable for the proposal and traffic patterns have been redesigned to ensure that all queuing will remain on the property. Low intensity around use will contribute to a diversity of services. And the proposal will have no impact on the existing building footprint or parking areas. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for. In Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet Zoning. Bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the application had, applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal. Will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. That's what I've got. Questions?
How do we go about adding a condition?
Okay, I think what we have to do is approve the findings.
I make a motion to approve the findings.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, and then Mick?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, then I think we move. To approve the permit. Subject to. The following condition. And I think if somebody, I'll, I'll, I'll type if somebody wants to.
I'll give it a whirl if nobody else.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Unless the police or fire chief object. That bollards or stanchions shall be placed along the length of the painted yellow line. Along the south side of the building where the drive through window will be located. Maybe we should say along the entire length.
Yeah, you gotta say how far.
Entire length of the painted yellow line.
Okay, so unless the police or fire chief objects, begin again.
Bollards or stanchions shall be placed.
Or stanchions. Shall be placed, yeah.
Along the entire length.
Yep, of.
Of the painted yellow line.
Okay.
Along the south side of the building. Where the drive through window will be located.
I'll read it back to you. Unless the police or fire chief objects, bollards or stanchions shall be placed along the entire length of the painted yellow line. Along the south side of the building where the drive through window will be located.
If I may, Madam Chair personally, instead of yellow line, I would put the term lane striping, which is the technical term that they use in case they use a different color.
Okay, okay, the painted. Tell me it again, Mick.
It's, it's proposed lane striping, the length proposed lane striping.
Proposed. Lane.
Striping.
Stripping. Okay. Entire length of the proposed lane striping along the south side of the building where the drive through window will be located.
We also want to condition a no left turn sign. Over by Old County Road, that exit.
Do you want that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Can we go back to the amendment for a moment?
The.
Condition?
Condition, the first condition, okay, yes.
I hate to get really technical, but the. South side of the bill, I guess. That's the striping right now does terminate. Beyond the end of the south side of the building, so that. And that's what we're saying, south side of the building, correct?
Right.
Yes, south side. Okay.
Does everybody think that's clear enough that, I mean?
Yeah, no, it's clear. I mean, we got, they're gonna get rid of that oil tank shed. So, yeah, yeah, I think we're fine. Yeah, sorry.
The, the, the oil tank shed. That is a danger. I mean, if somebody runs into that, so. Shall we go by his word that he said? He will, they will take it from there? Or should it be? Written somehow?
Didn't I agree that they were gonna put bollards, if I remember correctly, that they were gonna put bollards around that until it was removed, so. There would be bollards around it as if it was on any of the commercial properties, something was sticking there that had three or four bollards, whether they were concrete or whatever. So I can't seem to be, if, am I remembering that correctly? Maybe that was Alan that had said that?
Yes, if I may, you're correct. And also that storage shed is a concrete base. It has to be concrete because of the fuel tanks in there for enclosure for environmental purposes. It's our goal to eliminate that shed within the next year.
In the meantime, you want to put bollards around it until it's eliminated, right?
Yes, yes.
Should we condition that?
I don't know that we need to, but if you are more comfortable with conditioning it, I can, we could certainly do that.
If I, if I may, can I just, can I place a precast jersey barrier in front of it rather than the bollards? Cause then that can be reutilized somewhere else.
Sure.
I think, I think you should place it on the south side and the east side.
I would make a recommendation that you would be, especially for our elderly population, that you paint it bright yellow or something.
Yes, yeah.
Trust me, the guy who was making that left turn onto Route 6 and all over the Chevron was not elderly.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be nice.
Watch how you talk.
All right, I added the, I added the condition. I added the condition, a no left turn sign will be placed at the north exit. I did not add this bollard jersey barrier one unless you would like me to add it.
Yes.
Brought it up. How does Manny feel about it?
What?
As I said, Manny brought it up. So Manny, how do you feel about it? Through you, Sharon?
Do you want it, do you want it on there?
No, I don't think we need it.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll read you those two conditions again. One, unless the police or fire chief objects, bollards or stanchions shall be placed along the entire. Length of the proposed lane striping along the south side of the building where the drive through window will be located. And two, a no left turn signal, sign will be placed at the north exit.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Prove the permit. Okay, so all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
And Andy?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Chris, can you tell them what happens next?
Pardon me, yes, I will type up the decision. And Sharon will sign off on it and then it will be. Sent to all the butters and filed with the town clerk, which will start the 20 day appeal process. If there are no appeals, then Sharon signs off as the board certificate. And the original paperwork will be sent to Jean.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you all. Board, I think we have minutes, so you wanna stay for a minute. I also have one thing to tell you about the town media policy. And so, but thank you, Ms. Campus, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallow and Mr. Hart and Ms. Nadal and Mr. Hall, thank you very much.
Your wonderful office staff, they're great.
Yes, they are wonderful.
Thanks, honey. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I had a note from. I don't know, the town secretary of some sort about reviewing the media policy and it just looked like it was the open meeting law. But then it said that, you know, apparently what it was, was is about the question of meetings being recorded. And. Available for watching and they wanted to require that, but since we do that already. I, it doesn't really apply to us, so at that point I sort of dropped off and stopped worrying about it, so that's where. The town media policy is at this point. The problem is we have lost. Mira.
Yep.
And. That means that we've got to find someone who can do the technology, particularly if we go back to in person meetings and have to. Also do Zoom at the same time. Neither Chris nor I is prepared to do both of those things at the same time. I barely can chew gum and walk, so. I'm certainly not gonna be able to do that.
I have a question, Sharon. When are we, is there any plans to move back in to have the meeting at the Council on Aging again?
We are, at the moment, the deadline has been extended all the way out till April.
Of next year.
However, the town, the Council on Aging is still not open. So while we might be more willing to do that before April, we don't have that option yet, so I am waiting to see what happens when the select board. Starts meeting in person and then maybe we will move from there, but right now. Just stay tuned.
Lockdown.
There you go.
And I do think they're gonna want us to, to be, have available, people be able to meet remote, participate remotely. Even if we're in the. participate remotely, even if we're in the room. And if that's the case, it does need technical support. I can't be looking at a screen and also at the room. I just, I can't do that. Too dumb.
And we need to build an inspector too, so.
Yeah, we need to build an inspector, yes. That first.
In replacement, Paul's stead?
Right now, what's happening is Paul is still issuing and denying permits. And Rick Murphy is doing the inspections. But that can't go on for very long because Paul has another job, so. Stay tuned.
Just another employee of the town of Wellfleet needs to hire.
Right, exactly. I think there are five of them at the moment.
Select them on the.
Exactly. So Chris, we have minutes from last time?
Was it June 10, June?
No, I think it was June, um, June 24th, June 24th, Mr. Kurzwell was the only case.
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I saw Trevor first. Okay, all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Andy? You can vote on the minutes even though you weren't here. You just can't sec, move or second them. Trevor?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Sharon, aye. Okay, and I need a motion to adjourn. We have no, oh, before I do that, we have no meeting on July 22nd, which is dandy because my daughter was going to be here, which is why I didn't sit on this board. Cause I thought if it's going to be continued, I don't want to deal with mullen. So, so I'll just take preventative action, so. But no, we have no meeting on the 22nd, so our next meeting will be August 12th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, give second?
Second.
Manny's second, all in favor, Mick?
Yeah.
Dan?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. All right, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Working with everybody. Bye bye.
All right.
Bye, good night.
Night.
Good night.
Did you take the recording off? Thank you.
Wait one second, do you want to step?
Take the recording.